Thank you and good evening, everyone. I believe the mayor would like to recognize the passing.
I'll follow you.
Okay. We have four memoriam's tonight relative to former Quincy Public Schools employees. The first is Genevieve Bertoni. She was a Quincy Public Schools secretary for 20 years at the former Pollard School and in the curriculum office and was later at Quincy Junior College as a secretary to the dean of academic affairs, the vice president and president. Next, we have Patricia Cottarelli, Pat Cottarelli, central registration administrative nurse for 18 years. She'll be greatly missed. Next is Warren Lewis, a teacher at, one of my teachers at Massfield School, was a teacher for 40 years at Massfields, Moncler, and Squanum Elementary Schools and also served as Squanum's assistant principal, an excellent teacher. And similarly Pamela Mateo, an excellent teacher and administrator, was a teacher and administrator for 23 years, first a Spanish and French teacher at North Quincy High School and later assistant principal at Broad Meadows and North Quincy High School. If you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. And I know that the mayor would like to also recognize the passing of Chief Gorman.
Yeah, I think I might. The public doesn't necessarily see the interaction between departments, but there's certainly a lot of interaction between departments and one of which is the fire department. And Chief Gorman was the head of the fire department for a lot of years, as was his father. He also serves as director of emergency management. Loved the job, loved the city, so we offer our sympathy to his wife Sally and his children. Thank you.
So at this time, we have an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community persons may submit written statements of up to 300 words to the school committee at QSC open forum at QuincyPublicSchools.com by 4:00 PM of the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements will be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at open forum? Okay, so we'll move on. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening again. Hope everyone is doing well. First item on the agenda is school committee member recognition. Congratulations to Mrs. Emily Lebo for being recognized with a lifetime achievement award by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Board of Directors in honor of her contributions to the children of the Quincy Public Schools. Mrs. Lebo's career with the Quincy Public Schools began in 1985 with her appointment as a substitute school nurse before becoming an instructor in the health assistant program, then became the director of occupational education at the Quincy Vocational Technical School, and later was appointed director of career and technical education at Quincy High School. Mrs. Lebo is now in her 13th year as a Quincy School Committee member and has served a term as vice chair as well as being a founding member and chair of the teaching and learning subcommittee. The award will be presented at a dinner on November 8th during the MASC conference in Hyannis. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Lebo on this great recognition. Congratulations.
Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say that I had a great 22 or so years working for the district and when I left, I missed it so much, I decided to run for school committee because I just loved the place that much. And I've been so blessed to be able to serve on this committee for as long as I have. So I want to thank the constituents out there as well as all the administrators that I've worked with and for and the SLT and the superintendent's team for everything that they've done to support the school committee. Thank you. And the mayor, of course.
Thank you. Next is the backpack and school supply distribution. Over 3,000 backpacks filled with school supplies were recently delivered across the city to students in kindergarten through grade five. As you know, distribution events were held on Thursday, September 5th. And thank you, of course, to our school committee members who were able to attend as well as all of the SLT members and principals for their assistance in distributing these backpacks. Special thanks to our dedicated business partners, including Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts, Kratos to Crayons, Granite Telecommunications, Mass Bay Credit Union, and Quincy Credit Union for once again supporting the backpack and school supply initiative. And I can't speak highly enough of our business partners and how they step out, step up every year to help our students and our staff with this great initiative. Thank you again to the school committee for attending. Next is by the end of September, Quincy Public Schools will be completing initial fire and safety drills at all of our schools. This includes lockdown drills as well. Throughout the school year, there will be an additional, there'll be additional fire and lockdown drills at each school site scheduled. I want to give a special thanks to the transportation security director, Michael Drake, you and his team, and of course, the Quincy Police and Fire Departments for their assistance with these important safety measures for students and staff.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, superintendent. I just, I had also seen in the ledger this weekend that there was an article about the active shooter drills that the police and fire are doing sort of on behalf of, to prepare for any kind of situation if one were ever to come up in Quincy on the schools. So I'm wondering if maybe we could invite Mike Drakeio to come to an upcoming meeting to just kind of talk about any updates that we've had or any, you know, how they're doing that. It detailed in the article pretty specifically what they were working on, but I thought it might be a good idea to invite him to kind of talk to the public about what those drills might look like and if any, if the teachers are being brought into that to understand what would happen in those situations.
Sure, we can certainly have Mr. Drakeio do that. We may want to consider doing that in executive session in order to not necessarily reveal the procedures that would be followed for these types of things, just for the safety of students and staff.
Okay, I just warm it in general, like what was presented in the article.
I haven't read the article, but I'll take a look at it. But I definitely want to be careful about not revealing too much information to potential people who may use it for nefarious purposes.
Yeah, I just had a bunch of questions on it and I thought maybe it wasn't appropriate in this meeting because it's not officially on the agenda, but just where it was a tie-in with the safety drills. That would be great to have him here before us.
Yep, and the Quincy Police and the fire work very closely with us and we can review with you in detail what they've done over the last couple of years to become more acquainted with the schools in the event that there is an emergency that they need to respond to and this is part of that. Again, the specific details of what they do and what they've planned are geared towards obviously making sure that our students and staff are safe during these, you know, during these dangerous events. So we can certainly put something together so that you know what the updates are, but certainly teachers and staff are always included in the lockdown drills as well because that's the whole purpose of having a lockdown drill is to train and to practice in the event of a serious situation at one of our schools. But we'll be happy to put a presentation together for you.
Yeah, and they're aware of what would happen. So I know they know the lockdown end of it, but they're aware of what would, what happens on the outside of their classroom door, right? Like what police and fire are being trained to do.
Yeah, we act, we go through, during a lockdown drill, the entire lockdown drill process is, is actually performed as if it's a live lockdown.
Okay.
But we can review that with you.
That'd be great, thanks.
If I can jump in on that, just, just a little background on it for those that didn't see the paper. So the city applied for and received a grant through the UASI grant, which is homeland security monies. And we hired an outside company that specializes in all of this to bring the police, fire, and we involved the EMS from Booster Ambulance. We've seen a lot of things happen around the country over the years and, you know, thank God, nothing's happened here and we hope for the best, but you have to plan. And in some cases around the country, public safety officials failed and there wasn't enough planning, there wasn't enough training. So this is a very intense program for both police and fire. Who does what, who's responsible for what, when do fire go in, et cetera, et cetera, command center posts, all aspects of it. It's not just the schools because we've seen mass shootings in public squares, other spaces, so it's, it certainly includes the schools. I think at some point it'd be fine to invite both chiefs to come before us, just to give a little bit of an update on it. And I got to say, both departments are always training, so I'm very proud of the professionalism, both Chief Cannon and Chief Jackson, and the departments are performing so well. But it was a grand program, the training portion, official training portion is finished, there'll be ongoing training over time. And I think it's fair to note, and everybody knows this, I would think that police and fire in our schools on a regular basis, they know the buildings, they know the rooms, they know the niches, they know the basement, they know the boiler room. It's part of the training, just like a lot of other facilities in the city that are under our jurisdiction, but we're on top of things and I'm grateful to both chiefs for leading this effort. So at some point, I think it'd be, Mike, Mike can actually have them in, say what they can say in public.
Of course, thank you.
And we've done that in the past as well, so that's a great idea.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that. I know, Mayor, we had talked about putting the safety audit into an executive session. I don't know if that's too old now to look at, but I think it's still something that's valuable for us to take a look at and see where we are. I know, and I agree that some-
I agree with that. We should get an update from the company, which is a little, it's separate from this.
Right, right, and just take a look at that again. But I think a lot of stuff has to stay in executive session because you don't want to be showing your cards, I mean.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is the Quincy Public Schools Music Department. Recently completed two successful weeks of instrument demonstration for our students. Grades four and five students saw demonstrations of woodwind instruments and grades two students were introduced to string instruments. Amazingly, over 250 students expressed interest in joining the elementary school band program and received the rental instruments this past Monday night. Next Monday, students who are interested in playing a string instrument in our after-school string lesson program will receive theirs. Band lessons have begun for grades four and five students at school and the after-school strings program is scheduled to begin the week of October 15th. And so of course, thank you to our music department for everything they do to encourage our students to participate in band in all aspects of it. Next is for the upcoming November 5th Professional Development Day for QPS educators. Over 80 different small group sessions are available for 950 professional staff members to choose from with topics ranging from literacy, STEM, English learner, and special education supports to integrating music and movement, educator wellness, and restorative practices. We are looking forward to the special day for the Quincy Public Schools professional staff members and special thanks, of course, to Dr. Perkins and the superintendent's leadership team for organizing this great event. Last year was very successful and we're hoping to have another successful day on November 5th, so thank you, everyone, who helped put that together. And lastly, the city of Quincy is hosting the annual food truck and music festival on Saturday, October 5th from noon to 6:00 PM along Cardington Street with entertainment for families on the lawn of the Thomas Crane Library and the four bands on the main stage in the Cardington Building parking lot. So with that, that ends the superintendent's report.
Mayor Coke.
If I can jump in on that portion of it. The word is getting a little bit, but on November the 9th, we're going to be dedicating the newest monument at Mount Wallaston, the veterans' section. And we are putting a call out for all veterans either from Quincy or who now live in Quincy that served in the military during the Persian Gulf Desert Storm, Iraq, Afghanistan, or commonly known as the global war in terror. We have a number of folks that have already signed up, so we're inviting people to participate, to reach out to the Veterans Services Department of the mayor's office. And we get big plans for that day. Those veterans will be parading to Mount Wallaston led by our Quincy High, North Quincy High Band, of course. We have some distinguished speakers. Some of you may not be aware, but there's this, actually a row, that's at the Civil War monument to each of the conflicts and wars right up to Vietnam, and this will be the latest. And it's, it's that era, it's time that we recognize this era of veterans. So again, if you're from Quincy or if you moved away from Quincy, you're still eligible, or if you live in Quincy now and served, we'd love to have your name, address, and reach out to you directly to get an invitation out, but we'll, we'll let you all know more details later.
When is it again?
November 9th, Saturday.
Saturday.
At Mount Wallaston, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. Got that? Okay. Yes. Mrs. Lebo. I'm sorry, I didn't say this sooner, but I just wanted to say that the backpack event, having been in two of the schools the first week of opening and the condition of those schools was amazing, I just want to thank the custodial staff and the city people who have been working on our buildings because it was really, everything was shining and the kids were shining and the teachers were shining and it was just a joy to be there. So thank you to the custodians.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, old business is none and new business, we have student support services program improvement plan by Mrs. Pfeffield.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Coke, Superintendent Mulvey, and chairperson, Ms. Cahill, and school committee members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my program improvement plan.
There you go.
Is, oh, sorry. Better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. So I really appreciate this opportunity to share with you. I believe the Quincy Public Schools remains steadfast in its commitment to supporting academic, social, emotional, and mental health wellness of all students. Our comprehensive vision for, really centers around the implementation of tiered interventions designed to bolster students' academic progress while nurturing their social and emotional development. Through these efforts, we aim to create a robust support system that promotes the well-being for our students and their families. We're proud to highlight our strategic partnership with esteemed organizations which play a critical role in strengthening the network of resources available to our students and families. These collaborations enable us to expand the scope and support and offer more targeted interventions to meet the diverse needs of students. Before we dive into the details of our new goals for the academic year for 2024 and 2025, I'd like to offer a reflection on the progress made last year, towards last year's goals, celebrating the achievements and learning from the challenges. Beginning on page seven for a goal reflection, the student support team again collected and analyzed information and data related to high-risk reports. This is an indicator of how many students struggle with their mental health and require a referral to Aspire. There was a drop of about 25 referrals. There were 196 referrals to the crisis team in '22, '23, and in '23, '24, there were 171 referrals. Walker therapeutic clinicians were based in the majority of the sites, which allowed 80 students, over 80 students to receive school-based counseling. We believe that this may have contributed to the decrease in crisis referrals. Moving forward, we've partnered with Aspire Health Alliance to have a clinician at both North Quincy and Quincy High School to provide crisis intervention, short-term behavioral healthcare, and referrals. And this is absolutely free to Quincy Public Schools. Aspire wrote a grant for us and partnered with us. I'm really, really grateful for that opportunity. She's already done some great work this year. The SEL initiative on page eight, through open parachute and restorative practices, was a great success. Educators and student support staff have fully implemented these practices, but of course, there is more work to be done. Last year, new student support staff deans and educators were trained in restorative practices. This year, through professional development, we're providing support through a book discussion with Dr. Haley Watson. Staff signing up for this professional development will get a copy of the book, Finding the Words, and engage in guided discussions. And that's a real support for them to implement the platform. On page nine, supervisors of attendance. Again, assisted students and families in monitoring home visits in collaboration with site staff and agencies to mitigate barriers to regular attendance and school success. The appendix F includes the number of attendance hearings and you'll see like an increase for the attendance hearing, so that's the site-based hearing, that's like the very first meeting that we have. And the number of CRAs, which are the actual court petitions, they decreased. We feel that the earlier intervention of attendance hearings may have made positive impact. The supervisors of attendance continue to work to ensure that students who did not live in the city of Quincy attend public schools. You can see the many, many residency checks that have occurred throughout the past school year already underway this year again. So there were 614 residency checks that were done and seven, that required 757 visits. The homeless liaison has worked extremely closely with sites to ensure students who experience homelessness do not have a disruption in their education. She is also very active within the community to help families with resources that they need. She's really outstanding. There were a significant increase in high school students experiencing homelessness. And that is why I like programs like Schools on Wales and the prom donations and things like that are vital. So she has really crafted a number of strategic partners to help those kids. The goals for '24 and '25 begin on page 12. Student support teams will continue to gather high-risk data. And this year again, the youth risk behavior survey will be implemented on October 22nd. One of the important measures for the new implementation of a behavioral health navigator will be to collect data around how many referrals that are made to the navigator and the outcome of the referral. More information on the behavioral health navigator can be found in the appendix. Last year, I was able to write a grant through Beth Israel Leahy Health for Behavioral Health Navigator. We're excited to report that we're awarded $300,000 through that grant, which means that the Behavioral Health Navigator will be funded for three years. This academic year is year one. The Behavioral Health Navigator will assist students and families throughout the district that need mental health care. As you can imagine, navigating the mental health system is overwhelming, so we expect that more and more families will be able to access the care that they need through this grant opportunity. We are perfectly poised to assist those families that have the most barriers. We are so very grateful to Beth Israel, another amazing partner. The second goal is to create professional development plan for SEL and the implementation of the Sandy Hook Promise Program, grades six through 12, and Walker Solutions Professional Development Trauma-Informed Classrooms. Also this year, we've created a QPS Coalition for Student Mental Health and Wellness to strengthen the network of outstanding partner agencies that provide professional development, counseling, mentoring, substance use treatment. We've had two meetings thus far, and in appendix F, you can find the agendas for those meetings. The third goal is to implement programming to support hygiene, security, and Big Brother, Big Sister, Big Future Program to mitigate the barriers to good attendance. Mentoring and hygiene security are two specific strategies to support students with good attendance and academic success. We've already made significant progress in this area and you can refer to appendix G for more information and update on those initiatives. On page 13, continued goals. The goals this year are specific to the new programming and networking that is in this comprehensive plan. The Sandy Hook Promise student training, which includes whole-body training grades, throughout the district, so grades six through 12, so it's all staff and all kids, which is pretty amazing and it's free, and that's through the attorney general's office. And so there are two training sessions for the whole student body, starting with Hello to combat student isolation and Say Something. So I really feel like that's an important part of school safety, to see something, say something, to train everybody to use the same language. I'm really excited about that opportunity. And already, all the middle schools and the high schools participated in a welcome meeting this past week and this week. The student support staff will continue to support open parachute SEL platforms specifically to address stigma around mental health and to really get those parent resources out there. The student support staff will continue to participate in the NAN project, suicide prevention and trauma-informed classrooms, professional development, and student offerings. The high school student support staff will work with Aspire clinician to ensure that students receive crisis intervention, that short-term counseling, and referrals. The middle and high school student support staff will participate in the nicotine vaping cessation professional development so that sites can provide support for those students struggling with healthy decisions and dependence. The goals for the supervisors of attendance begin on page 22, and on page 24, you'll find the goals for the homeless liaison. The goals for the supervisors of attendance and the homeless liaison will remain the same. Residency and chronic absenteeism are the focus for the supervisors of attendance and for the homeless liaison. She will provide staff, families, and students resources and supports as well as coordinating with community organizations. And that concludes my presentation and I'll be glad to take some questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mara. This was incredible reading. It really is an incredible group of people who'll be working with our kids. I just wanted to make sure that we haven't dropped the ball on Dove. I don't see them in there anywhere, but I know that they've been doing a lot of this already and I'm hoping that they'll be part of that coalition.
Oh, yeah, actually, they just, they sent me a presentation, you know, some slides about what they did over the summer and, you know, they're definitely a vital part. They just weren't new this year, so I just didn't include them in the goals. Yeah, but they're excellent, yeah, they're great partners.
And I have another question. So the Sandy Hook Promise is amazing and the three phases of that are amazing. I think it's going to be wonderful to see and I agree that the common language is going to be great, but I really loved the way they sat with Hello. I think that's a great pro, it seems like a growth program. And I was thrilled when I was reading the trauma-informed stuff from Walker, that that wasn't a one-off, that they'd kind of come back and work with the teachers after they'd given them some help and some, some ideas of what to do. That was a pretty intensive-looking professional development as well.
Yes.
I had a question about the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Who were the bigs going to be?
I'm sorry?
Who were the bigs going to be in the Big Brother, Big Sister?
Okay, so they're focusing on grade nine at Quincy High School, so they're doing their recruitment, so they, they're recruiting from the community?
Okay, so it's not teachers necessarily?
No, teachers, that's a little tricky. Teachers can't really have a dual relationship with students, it gets a little tricky, so it could be teachers from an elementary school that maybe would want to mentor, but they can't have the child in their class and be a big, I think that would be-
So it's somebody from outside the school that will be doing the mentoring?
Yes, yep.
Are they reaching out to like alumni or college, you know, like Curry or Quincy Coalition?
Yep, so actually Laura helped the Big Brother, Big Sister Association reach out to alum through like class lists of older, so like, you know, late twenties and beyond. And also, they've worked with a lot of our partners already, so Keith Segala has worked with them. We meet with them monthly and they're part of that QPS coalition. And so they've been keeping us updated in the appendix. You'll see that 65 kids already signed up. Yeah, and so they've, they have recruited, like at that, at that time, they had 30 bigs, but they're really hopeful that they're going to be able to meet the need and they want to expand. So every year, they're going to expand and they're going to include North Quincy High School, too.
That's great, it's a great program. I've seen great, great things happen with it, so it's an amazing amount of support between Walker and Aspire and the Northeastern and was it UMass Boston Northeastern, the Beacon Grant and having interns in to-
Yep.
So I assume there are people who are training to be psych, school psychologists and stuff that'll be coming in as interns?
Right, and school counselors, and school adjustment counselors, so they actually, they, the school adjustment counselors are also mental health and school adjustment, it's like a combined program. So we have three students and then, that are doing school counseling and then we have one school psychologist through Beacon, Northeastern will start next year.
Okay, it looks great, it really is, it's a whole lot of stuff, but it's amazing, the support and just the kind of funding that we're getting to do this stuff and the partners that are stepping up and they're paying for a whole lot of it for a while anyway, so.
I know, it's really amazing people, I'm really grateful.
And in some of it, I can absolutely see what the evaluation will be, where you'll be able to see some numbers change, but I'm wondering if you have built, or if the coalition will build an evaluation system so we can see how all this worked out?
Yeah, yeah, and you know, we set goals, if you look at the agendas from our meetings, we set our own goals as a coalition and one of them was to create a resource guide, so yeah, so I think that will be really helpful, just so they'll know, like maybe you can't get school-based counseling from one agency, but another agency might be doing home-based counseling and there might be openings there. So just to kind of know what each agency can bring and what the waiting lists are like and what insurances they take, it's just going to really help. And Man at Health did say that they're going to train the Behavioral Health Navigator for us for, for nothing, so they're just wonderful partners also, so just good people.
That's an incredible position. I did some reading on it and it's an incredible position. I did some reading on it, and it's an incredible position. Really, I think some of the sites, when you go out there, nobody knows how to access the stuff. And some of the stuff isn't even real, but if you have a navigator who can walk you through it, really great.
Yeah, really great.
A lot of really good stuff. It's going to be a busy year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
A comment and three quick questions. First of all, congratulations on the behavioral health grant.
Oh, thank you.
Fantastic move.
Thank you.
Three-year grant, you said, right?
Yes, yep.
On the high-risk attendance, the early intervention part, could you just say again what the metrics were in terms of how impactful it was last year and the continuation this year?
So we worked really, the supervisors of attendance worked really hard to meet kids and families a little earlier when they started to, you know, have some, you know, unexcused absences. So really kind of working with the families early on with, you know, the principal and the counselor. They would have a meeting, and so those are the attendance hearings. So they would just kind of offer support. Maybe they became aware of a medical issue, maybe there was some anxiety.
That was in the last school year.
That was, yeah, that was last school year.
Did you see the numbers drop because of those?
We saw the number of what we call, you know, the CRA petition. So we didn't have to take legal, we didn't have to file a legal, you know, petition because if there's less, you know, petitions, that means that kids were doing better so that, you know, we didn't have to file that. We don't love to file the CRAs. We're mandated by law at some point to do that if there's not improvement. So I took that as a really good sign.
And then you indicated on the McKinney Vento that homeless students, their federal grants are no longer available. When did that, is that recent phenomena?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I thought I read that federal grants were no longer available, you said?
Well, there has been, for the McKinney Vento position, they've decreased the amount that they allocate towards that position, the McKinney Vento grant itself, to pay for the liaison. So that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, the language that you had in the goal said federal programs, that the loss of federal programs will likely result in more homeless families. So which programs?
Well, so the, you know, the recovery funding and things like that, that people, you know, that.
Were COVID-related.
Yeah, so people are losing, you know, money that way. And for some reason, the number of high school students that are homeless has really, you know, increased, which is really tough.
Do you know the numbers from last year to this year?
Yeah, it's in the appendix. I know my appendix is kind of big, so. Hang on, I'm sorry, I can tell you. So it's Appendix B, and so it's just like a chart. I don't know if you have it there?
I do.
Okay.
But what was it last year? What's it this year right now at the moment? I mean, I know it's a snapshot in time, but.
So the, I, so actually, I don't have the numbers for this year, so I just have last year's numbers.
And how do they compare to the year before?
Sorry, I say it in my PEP. So there was, I think it's like, there was an increase. Sorry, I have to go to reflections. So it went up to 209, and I believe the year before it was like 170.
Got it. And then last question. What, if any, percentage of these programs are subsidized by SIR funds? And does that lapse at the end of the school year or any?
No, no SIR funds, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was actually just going to say thank you so much for putting that in there. You know I'm going to ask every year for that. Saves me the time of asking, so thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
This was a fabulous report. I know you do actually so much more than this, so this is amazing, though. It's really, really great. And we had a really great presentation on the Hope and Comfort Program. I was wondering if you had any update on how that's going right now?
Yep, yeah, so we did, like, over the summer, we worked with the Youth Works Program. So we had high school kids help us pack the kits, which was really fun and really sweet. And we delivered those kits to the middle school, the three middle schools that are participating in the program. So it's Southwest, Broad Meadows, and Point Webster. And Snug Harbor has continued to get products. So where, you know, there'll be other deliveries, we'll have packing events. So that's another, I worked with the community service coordinators, too, to give high school kids the opportunity to participate in that. I think those kids will want to come back and do it again. They really enjoyed doing that, and I was really appreciative of their help. It's a lot of stuff.
Have we gotten any feedback from families on the program at all?
Well, Snug Harbor did do a survey last year, and they were really appreciative of the products. You know, there were a few people that said, because we did the whole school last year, that said, you know, thank you, but I don't need the products. But most people really appreciated because the price of groceries and things like that and, you know, everybody was happy to receive it. There was no, like, stigma around it. I, you know, we didn't get that sense that, you know, people, you know, didn't want it. It's just that they didn't want to take if other people needed stuff. So the feedback was fantastic, and they actually liked the products.
Thank you so much. This was wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tons and tons of work to put this together and run these programs, and they're all so great to have available for our kids, especially the mental health stuff that, you know, since COVID, we've seen increase. And it's maybe the first time I've heard you say that there's been a decrease in referrals, and that's fantastic. And I hope that that's because of all the things we have in place that are, they're helping. And so I have a couple of questions. One, I'm just going to ask first because Mrs. Hubley brought up the Hope and Comfort Program. I actually had a student reach out from one of the Girl Scout troops. And one of their projects, they're looking to try to get hygiene products in all of the restrooms in all the schools to just have some hygiene products in there, and they're just looking for some help in how to coordinate that or fund it. So I just wanted to bring that up while we're talking about the hygiene stability. I don't know how that would work with the Hope and Comfort Program. I know it's more of a home-based program, like you take those products home with you, and I think there were more, the Girl Scouts were hoping for more in-school availability in the restrooms. So just wanted to bring that up. Follow up with some contact information.
Sure, absolutely.
And then I wanted to ask about a couple of things. One question, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but the Big Brother, Big Sister, all of the bigs that they're reaching out to, they're all queried, fingerprinted, background checked, all of that.
So Big Brother, Big Sisters does that? You know, they have their system of checking, so yes.
Are they, but do they get query checked and fingerprinted as we would for, if they were a volunteer in our schools?
Yeah, sure.
That's great. And that's for all the bigs?
That would be for all the bigs.
All the mentors, okay.
They do all of that.
Okay, that's fantastic. I have a ninth grader in this program, so I'm excited to see how that's going to go.
Great.
And see how that.
We built that into the contract, so it's a guarantee. It was, it's their standard, but we wanted to see it in writing.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think for sure. I mean, if we can't have parents go in and work a book fair, then we definitely need to make sure that.
Correct.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Who do, is there a list somewhere as to the members on the QPS Coalition, Coalition team? And I think there's probably another word in that.
Yeah, there is.
Coalition for Student Mental Health and Well-being. Is there like a list of who the members on that coalition are?
Yep, yep, I have it. It's up, I have the email list, and then, yeah, I can share that with you.
Okay, I just, or just in general, who's on that? Is it like SLT and then all these partners that you're working with or?
So from Kim Conley is on the team with me. We just added the school adjustment counselors from each high school. There's Manit, there's Big Brother, Big Sister, Quarry. Quarry just got licensed to be a mental health provider, and they are having, I should have put this in my report, but this is really new, that we have clinicians from Quarry, one at Atlantic and one at North Quincy High School. They haven't started yet, but they're going to be working with our kids, too, and they're Mandarin and Cantonese-speaking clinicians. Yeah, I can't even believe how much, how rich this community is, you know, with the partners. So there's Walker, Aspire, Bay State Community Services, who's been, they have been fantastic. They're helping us with the logic model or the evaluation for the Behavioral Health Navigator. They're also providing the vaping cessation professional development. So like every time we go to a meeting, they're like, oh, we can do this, we can, you know. So Bay State's really fantastic. Maria Droste just joined us, and we're excited to have that counseling. They do really low-fee counseling or free counseling for families in need. I know, I feel terrible if I forget somebody. I know, I can definitely send you a list.
This is great, just in a sense of who is. I didn't know if like the family liaisons were on there as well or how, kind of how deep we went into it. So it's more the partners and a couple, yourself and Kim Conley, just kind of coordinating all the programs that were being offered. That's great, because it seems like there's a lot to juggle. So getting everyone together on that is really great. And knowing what everyone else is doing so to not have the overlap is really great, too. The Sandy Hook, as Mrs. Lebo said, fantastic, looked like a fantastic program and much-needed, especially, you know, middle school, you know, just saying hello, starting with a hello, that's, you know, huge. So I think everyone can benefit from that. And my last question on the McKinney Vento, there were, did we have any, in the stats we have here, and maybe these aren't new enough stats, but would they include any families that were displaced that were staying at the Wallace and T? Or did it include any of those students? Did they ever end up entering into QPS for us or?
Well, I know that Laura in the homeless liaison and I, you know, but Laura really in the homeless liaison have been kind of working with those referrals as the Assistant Superintendent Perkins has been, too. That's a very confusing thing right now. We were given a number of students to register, and then they left. So, so no, we don't have anybody, you know, from like the ENC shelter registered in our schools, I don't believe. Two, I'm sorry, two students.
Yeah. The last school year, we had no students ever registered. In the last two weeks, we had nine students register, and seven students have moved on. So they only went to school for a few days, and then they were moved. And so Leslie Britson reached out to the city that they're moving to because we did, we did get, you know, have some testing done, and we have records for them now that we can share with their new school. But we do have two students currently.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Being the vice chair, I don't get to ask any questions because everyone asks them. But I will say, I don't envy you for the work that you do because of its complexity, but I'm grateful for the work that you do because of its complexity.
Thank you so much.
I mean, it's, you know, overwhelming work, and all the things that we see that are happening in this country and schools and the violence and all that is, you know, disheartening. But I think that, you know, we, as a school committee, pushed to have the security audits done on the building. And we, you know, look forward to make, seeing what the assessments are as far as the buildings themselves and the protocols that they're effective and they're, you know, giving us what we need. But to your point, it has to go hand in hand with, you know, the mental health of our students. And I think the, one of the biggest things, I've been doing a lot of reading on some of the, the Atlanta and some of the school shootings and things that have happened in the past. And, you know, see something, say something. I talked to the superintendent one day about this, and I think we really have to let kids know that, you know, please, if there's anything, you know, that you feel like is uncomfortable that you're hearing amongst your peers, we need you to say something. And if it's nothing, great. But, you know, that's how kids get help, and, you know, we need to do that. And I hope that, and I think from what you're saying, that we do do that. But I think that has to be reinforced throughout the year, honestly. And then the other piece on that, do we, and I know it's hard when we reach out to parents and families because they don't always see what we're sending them or really pay attention to some of the messaging that we send them. But that's also important for families, too, because some of the things that I have read also points to other families of kids that appears, you know, that they may have seen something that didn't seem right and, you know, don't really say anything. And that might help, you know, future issues from happening, you know? So I don't know if we communicate with families or parents on that side of the table, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we haven't done Sandy Hook before, and I do, but I do think it's going to teach us all how to, you know, kind of contend with these issues, how to stay connected, how to trust each other. And I do think parents are an important part of that. If we get concerned, you know, when we have to, you know, refer a child to the crisis center, now that we have this clinician, she can do the crisis eval right there. And so for families not to have to go to an emergency room to get a crisis eval is huge. And so I think that builds trust. So if a student needs like a hospital level of care, the clinician can refer that child through that assessment right there. So to have someone that can do like an assessment, you know, a mental health assessment, you know, connected to Aspire is huge.
And working with families.
And working with families and building that trust. And I just think that, you know, the resources that we have, you know, like with the Behavioral Health Navigator, we're going to have to do outreach to parents so that they know, you know, that we have these services and this person's going to help them. And that person that we're looking to hire speaks Portuguese. So, you know, that's, that's great. It's like another barrier removed. So the more kids and families that are connected and the more barriers that we remove, and we have the family liaisons. That's why I said we're perfectly poised to remove a lot of barriers because those fabulous family liaisons can help with, you know, with other language and communication. They know these families, like, so if people need help, we're going to get them help. And I think that's a huge part for safety for everybody.
So let me ask you, the navigator, it's a system, right? It's like, is a software that has all the resources on it?
It's a person.
Okay, because I was going to say, like, there is someone who helps them with all those pieces of the puzzle. Take away the intimidation and identify what they need. Thank you, because I really do feel we need to make sure that people, like you said, I think it's a trust issue, that you can come to us, you know, you can trust us. We're not going to throw anyone under the bus or, you know, any kids, you know, highlight them for coming to us and helping, you know, with messaging around someone who maybe is struggling. And the Hope and Comfort, I love that. It's a great program, and I would love to volunteer if there's ever an opportunity where they're putting together. Maybe we come as a school committee, and we can come and do a, you know, call us, let us know when you're doing that. And the third thing is the Big Brother. I did see a lot of outreach, and I actually, I had reposted some things, and people, private messaged me a couple of people that I think signed up to volunteer. So if you have that again, and maybe on the social media, if they can share it again, and then we can share it again and try, because you need another maybe 30 people or so to meet the kids that you have, that would be great.
Awesome, thank you.
So thank you. Yep.
On the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative, you had said that it was a free grant that we were paying for that through the Attorney General's office?
The Attorney General just sent out information about it, so I signed up to learn about it. And they just, you just had to sign up, and they come in person. and they just, you just had to sign up and, um, they come in person. They do assembly style kind of trainings for everybody in the building.
So is this for only one year?
Next year also.
It's for next year as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, just had one more, um, thought. Mrs. Cahill, when you were speaking about this say something, um, portion of the Sandy Hook Promise, um, what I was suggesting back in the superintendent's report about having a safety kind of meeting with Mr. Drakeo here, um, I think it's all related, right? I think if, you know, putting all these parts together, it's very related to, you know, making sure we're noticing if someone's having a problem or making sure that they're feeling welcome and just notice, noticing if something's off. Um, having parents feel, trust if they see something, uh, it all works together. So if, if we're bringing everyone into the fold and saying as much as we can in open session, and again, I agree, some specifics in executive session, but if we're being open about everyone knows, you know, the trainings that are going on and what we're doing. So maybe that meeting that I was suggesting could be a little bit bigger where, uh, the mayor had suggested maybe the, um, the police chief and the fire chief, maybe also we can go over a little bit more about the Sandy Hook Promise there and just kind of figure out, maybe, maybe it's a bigger, um, thing I'm asking for on an agenda where we just kind of talk about safety, uh, at that meeting and kind of how we're addressing it in multiple ways so that parents can understand what we're doing, um, staff and teachers, you know, if they don't understand everything that we're offering together, we just kind of have that meeting in one place where we're talking about it. I don't, does that make sense to maybe do something like that?
And if you have facilities and security, what's that?
Yeah, maybe we could do like a bigger.
At our meeting.
That could be a presentation from, you know, during the facility.
Yeah, maybe something bigger like that. That would be great. Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Laura, is this something we should have a parent academy about? I mean, this is a lot of stuff in our schools and maybe we should just have a parent academy, let people know the kind of supports that there are too.
Sure, yeah.
I think that's one of the greatest things that we do. We do a lot of great things. But I do think the parent academies are, are pretty awesome, um, just to make sure that, that, is that transparency for people who'd like to see it too. So I hate to have you make another presentation, but it might be nice to do that for the parents at some point in time.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Mrs. Lebo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, next on the agenda, we have workshop meet, no, okay.
Health Service.
Yeah, I turned the page too early. Um, Health Service Program Improvement Plan, Mrs. Hira.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor Superintendent and members of the school committee. Thank you for having me. I don't know if you can, is this picking up?
I think you're on, I have them both on. Try, can you hear it?
Can you just pull it a little closer?
A little closer? Okay. I would like to take this time to review the Health Services Team Goals from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and to share the twenty-four, twenty-five team goals with you. Our nursing team worked to educate staff, students and families in the prevention of infectious diseases with main, main focus on strep throat, conjunctivitis, influenza, and the ever-present COVID. Um, newsletters were sent home, bulletin boards were utilized to provide information. Nurses taught students on an individual basis when the students visited the health office. And there were one hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight health office visits last school year. And that's a lot of teaching. Um, so we recognize that one of the most important things a school nurse can do is to increase school attendance rates by using their skilled nursing assessments to keep students in school when they're deemed healthy enough to stay in school. Our professional development meetings focused on enhancing our nursing assessment skills regarding ear, nose, throat issues, seizures, and orthopedic injuries. We also attended a class to update our medical knowledge regarding the etiology, assessment, and treatment of life-threatening food allergies. As we enter the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, one of our goals, as listed on page nine in the PIP, is to help decrease chronic absenteeism by educating our community about infectious diseases. So obviously, we're continuing with that. We will be focusing this year on measles, staphylococcus infections, and all respiratory viruses. Um, our emphasis will be on recognizing and reporting the illness symptoms, proper hand washing, and immunizations. So some of the initiatives will include a staff training in the first week of school, and this includes infectious disease training as well as EpiPen, asthma, diabetes, those type of things. Um, we have sent home a S'more newsletter to all parents and guardians in the first week of school. It's called the Guidelines and Information for Healthy School Year. Nurses track students who are diagnosed with any infectious illnesses using our SNAP electronic health record. Bulletin boards are designed with colorful messages reinforcing important infection prevention health measures. Um, we will communicate with Quincy Health Department nurses for any infectious illnesses that we need to reach out for help with. Individualized health teaching is provided to students, their family, and staff. So this year, during our professional development, we will focus on another one of our goals, which is listed on page ten. Um, and it is to continue to enhance our nursing assessment skills. We will have presentations from Boston Children's Hospital for cardiac and respiratory assessments. And in addition, the nurses will receive a BLS recertification training using the American Heart Association Guidelines. We have added a new initiative, which is listed on page eleven. And in partnership with Manette Community Health Center, King Optical, and the Lions Club of Quincy, um, at the end of last school year, we did like a mini pilot type program. And any students who had failed their vision screening through the year, had not had the opportunity to go for an exam, um, were able to sign up for a comprehensive eye exam at Manette Health Center. King Optical was available with, um, frames if kids needed to pick them out. Lions Club was there, um, for financial assistance if there were people who needed financial assistance. Uh, Dr. Jeannie Hopkins and Dr. Ben Strake at Manette, uh, hosted a one-day event where a student referred by our nurses from Montclair, Parker, Atlantic, and North Quincy High Schools could register for the eye exam. We focused on kind of a walking distance around North Quincy Manette because that's where it's located. Um, so we had, let's see, if the students were determined they needed these glasses, they could pick them up when they came in at Manette, or they could be sent to the school nurse at the students' building. Uh, we had, let's see, we had ten students take advantage of this program last year. Seven of them were determined to need glasses and all seven of them got their glasses. Um, so we're hoping to increase this program this year and we're gonna continue to partner with Manette, King Optical, and the Lions Club. So sometime in November, we will have another Day of Vision at Manette. We will focus on kids at the end of last school year who hadn't passed their screening, um, because we haven't quite screened everybody yet. And so we, and we're hoping to repeat it in the spring. Um, the Health Nutrition and Wellness Advisory Council meets four times a year. Our main goal is to promote wellness during the school year. The Advisory Council also provides guidance and support to individual school wellness teams as well as reviewing our wellness and concussion policies on a yearly basis. Mass Healthy Smiles, which is our dental program initiative, will be coming to our schools again this year to provide cleanings, sealants, and fluoride treatments to our students. If students require treatment beyond this, then the hygienist will refer out the students and connect them with a local dentist, um, for ongoing dental care. There were five hundred and ninety-two students that were treated by the hygienist last year. All of the students received at least one cleaning and one fluoride treatment. Seventy percent received a second cleaning and sixty-three percent had a fluoride treatment, um, a second fluoride treatment. So that's dependent on their age and what's needed for their teeth. Um, so there were eight hundred and thirty-two dental sealants applied. So that's like per tooth, I guess. Um, according to Mass Healthy Smiles, we had a far higher participation rate than they typically see in most school districts. Um, you should have a copy, um, with the PIP there that they had provided that, uh, presentation, which was very nice. Um, so our dental hygienist is Jackie Ventura and I work really closely with her and we're excited to do this again this year. Forms already went home to parents. They're in the hands of the hygienist now, being reviewed. We're hoping to get started within the next few weeks in October with the first exams. Um, so the appendix, starting on page sixteen, includes a link and a couple examples of the PowerPoint presentation that we offer to staff, the Healthy Guidelines S'more Newsletter link for parents that nurses use towards meeting their health services goals. The data from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four end-of-year report on page seventeen in the appendix reflects how much work it takes our nurses to keep our community safe and healthy. As I had said before, there were a hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight student encounters, which are visits, up from ninety-one thousand eighty-eight in the year before and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and seventy in twenty-one, twenty-two. Of these, one hundred thousand six hundred and eighty-nine students were returned to class after a visit to the health office. This is approximately a ninety-five point one percent return to class rate. And this has increased. It was ninety-three point three percent the year before and ninety point two percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. So this definitely demonstrates the impact that our school nurses have on keeping students in school. Um, they cared for three thousand seven hundred and eight students with specialized healthcare needs, which is an increase of four hundred and twenty-eight students. There were thirty-seven reported diagnosed head injuries, which occurred during school sports in, or in school activities, and thirty-nine that occurred during other activities outside of school, so somewhere in the home. Um, school nurses work closely with students who have been diagnosed with a concussion. Doesn't matter if it was in school or out of school, we're still working with them. They collaborate with the student, parents, primary care providers, and school staff to monitor the medical management of the student and work with the school staff to adjust their academic schedules when necessary. There were eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight scheduled doses of prescription medication administered, which is an increase of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight doses. Seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight additional medication doses were administered, administered per the as-needed prescriptions, things like Tylenol, Motrin, Tums, those type of things. This shows an increase of three thousand six hundred and forty-nine from last year when there was a shortage of our liquid Tylenol. Um, so it should be noted also that we do not, as a first-line treatment, give these medications. We are committed to teaching students how to manage their discomfort with other means first before giving medication. Examples are like ice, heat, rest, um, relaxation techniques, meditation. Uh, we don't try to just jump, give you a pill and go to class. There were twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-three documented nursing communications to a parent or guardian regarding student health issues. Nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one documented nursing communication with school staff and nine hundred and eleven documented communication with community agencies. So that could be, um, the health department or individualized doctors. The seven QPS staff nurses who are certified CPR instructors continue to offer CPR AED classes to our staff throughout the school year. We had eighty-nine staff members that were CPR AED certified last year. And with the help of Brewster Ambulance, the Matter of Heart Initiative, which will continue this year again, um, it resulted in all the eighth grade students learning hands-only CPR with ninety-six who completed the full certification class that was offered. Of that ninety-six there, it's a mix of parents and students. Um, and this initiative, as I said, will continue. So as you can see, our nurses work diligently to provide quality nursing care to our community and we are committed to keeping healthy children in school. Thank you for your time and support. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Um, not just for this, but for all you and your, and all the nurses do. I mean, this is amazing. Um, the number of visits, um, just incredible work. Um, a couple of things I had a question on. Um, this, the thing that stuck out to me a little bit was, um, the, the eighty-nine staff members certified in CPR, is that just nursing staff?
No.
So that's staff?
That's, that's all staff.
Okay.
Parents, teachers, whoever wants to sign up. We offer four classes throughout the year.
Okay.
Uh, we advertise it out, whoever wants to sign up.
Okay. Um, do you, and I'm just noticing that last year it was almost doubled that. Is there?
It was, I think there was a drop-off on keeping track. There's somebody else who keeps track, keeps those CPR records for me. And, um, all that was provided to me was one small subset. So I'm sure there were more, but that's all I could capture.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's, um, yeah, that's, that's great. I think, uh, yeah, I mean, if it's not recorded, you know, properly, but as long as everyone, as long as you're comfortable with the amount of people in each building that, that are CPR certified, that's great.
And we also, it's a two-year cycle, so they're certified for two years.
Yep.
So sometimes we do see that up and down.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you. Um, and just, you know, from, from dental, the vision, just the amount of partners that you're bringing into the fold as well. I mean, it's great, I thank the partners as well, but I know it's, I mean, you're getting those partners, you're reaching out and finding those. I'm just wondering if, um, can you email this to us? It's just, it's hard to read, like, I was curious, you know, what services they provided on that.
Yeah, it didn't, is that the dental one?
Yeah, it didn't photocopy well on just, I, I would just be curious as to what, um, the services were that were provided in this chart.
Yeah, I think the breakdown is like sealants, fluid, uh, fluoride.
Yeah.
Um, cleanings. But yeah, yeah, we can email, we certainly can do that.
That would be great, thank you. But, um, I'm just so appreciative of, um, all the partnerships you're able to cultivate and, and all the services you're able to offer the students. So thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is amazing. Your nurses are amazing. You guys do a wonderful job. Thank you so much. Um, just one question. Um, do the nurses get any training on assisting children with hearing aids?
Until this time, no. Other than our ENT assessments, you know, which is outside of the scope, uh, hearing aids generally are outside the scope of a nurse as far as like how they work using them. But it's not that difficult, you know? If we had someone that wanted to do a training, that would be great. We would do it. But the nurses are pretty much, if they're involved, it's mainly battery replacement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll follow up with you on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
The data on page seventeen is unbelievable. It really is unbelievable. What a group. Uh, and now with the Learning Center opening, I'm sure you've increased your staffing?
Yes.
And, uh, we'll be seeing bigger numbers, more impressive numbers. I love the dental program. When you look at those numbers of kids who've been served, um, what a huge thing that is for somebody to, you know, we talk about mental health, but somebody's got a toothache for some reason, some other physical reason that they can't come to school. It's, it's huge. It really is huge.
I went to visit one of the, you know, while they were doing one of the programs and we had a student who was, you know, had a tooth abscess and they immediately stopped what they were doing, went and called the parent, went and called the dentist, got the child an appointment that day, and just, it lined up so beautifully. And now that kid felt better and could come to school and learn and it just, I, I can't say enough about the program. It's really great.
It's wonderful. It really is wonderful. Thank all the nurses for the work they do and for your leadership. Um, it's terrific, terrific program.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just echoing everything. I love the format of the PIP. I love the data. I love how you correlated last year and this year and the contextual explanation that you gave around some of the complicated issues and it's, Mrs. Perdius said the partnerships as well that you're doing. And it's making a meaningful difference in so many families in, in this city. It's just terrific. So I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation as usual. Um, I spoke to you about this last year and you said something to me that kind of took me aback. I asked you about the LifeVac system and why it's not used or why we don't have it. And you told me something that really surprised me. Could you review that for everybody to hear it?
Sure.
Because we have a lot of younger kids now, pre-K, um, who are more likely to have a situation where they're choking on something.
Correct. So nurses work under a licensure and we have to follow the laws of the licensure. The LifeVac is not quite FDA-approved. So until it becomes FDA-approved, we cannot utilize that tool legally using, under our nursing license. So the FDA is something that we have to wait on before we can use a Life- So the FDA is something that we have to wait on before we can use a LifeVac. The evidence-based procedure that we use is what formerly was known as Heimlich, which, you know, is the abdominal thrust. Should the FDA come along and approve it, we are certainly willing to look into having that in the schools, but as of right now, it's not legal for us to use it.
As I said last year to you, I was surprised that the FDA has not approved it. I don't understand why it wouldn't be, but I'm not a medical doctor.
Yep, and.
My cousin is.
Yep, thank you.
Good answer. Thank you so much. And, you know, I say this all the time when I'm out and about and talking to people. We have an amazing system, we really do. And, and, you know, when you come up and present and you show the extra work that you do to bring things to partners to the table, to give our kids what they need so that they can learn, you know, without a toothache, so that they can have the home comfort material so they feel good about coming to school. And those seem like simple things, but they're really huge, they're important, and, but all of it together. And, and, you know, we really need to be proud of Quincy Public Schools for everything that comes to the table here, and our kids are really lucky. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Can we have, oh, we need a motion to approve, and second by Mrs. Lebo, roll call vote, please.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
I knew that. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the School Improvement Plan template by Dr. Perkins.
Thank you, good evening.
And Mr. Marani.
Yes, I'm joined here by.
You're not on the list.
Mr. Marani. And so we wanted to just take a minute to present to you the School Improvement Plan template. We did this last year around this time, and we thought it was actually really effective to get your feedback prior to the principals doing their presentations and developing their plans. And so we thought that we would bring that to you again, and again, you know, ask you for your feedback and if you want to see any changes, so that we can make sure that we incorporate those into the School Improvement Plan template. So just to refresh your memories, you know, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what are the required elements of the School Improvement Plan, what the most recent format was, so based on the changes that you suggested last year, what the, the format is that we're currently working from, any notable changes that we want to make sure we present to you, and then SIP presentation information. So some of the required elements and where they show up in our School Improvement Plan. So the first required element from the Department of Education is an assessment of the impact of class size on student performance, student-to-teacher ratios, and ratios of students to other supportive adults and resources. And so we do include that, and you'll find that in our current template under the demographics section, we have school, class sizes, and we also have include staffing within the appendix. In addition, number two is a scheduled plan for reducing class size if deemed necessary. This is not typically an area of concern in Quincy. However, if it is an area of concern, principals will absolutely address it within their School Improvement Plan. We also monitor class sizes as GU throughout the course of the school year. Number three is professional development for school staff and allocation of any funds. And so where that is in the School Improvement Plan is under Section B, which is that we have actually included a professional development plan in there. And typically, the district is the one that funds the professional development. So number four is enhancement of parental involvement in the life of the school. And we did add somewhat recently a family engagement and communication section, and I think the communication section was actually new based on some feedback that you all had provided to us last year. School safety and discipline, that is under the SSDR data in, in our demographics section, and also, it also is included within the appendix from the vocal survey results that we include there. Just continuing on with some of the required elements. So as, number six is an establishment of a school environment characterized by tolerance and respect for all groups. So the principals absolutely talk about this and how they address this within their principal's message, within the reflection when they analyze their vocal data, and they look at their spring vocal data within the appendix. Item seven is extracurricular activities. We have this, we actually have a chart that includes all of the extended-day activities, and that's in Improvement Plan Section C. Means for meeting within the regular education programs at the school, meeting the needs of diverse learning needs of as many children as possible, including children with special education needs currently assigned to separate programs. And again, they do reflect on all of this within the principal's path, under the data reflection, the goals reflection, the vocal reflection. It's also weaved in within their School Improvement Plan goals, their statements and their action steps. In particular, if they have, you know, substantially separate programs or other programs in their building, you know, those, those teachers and those programs participate in the development of the School Improvement Plan goals, just like every other teacher in the building. And number nine, any further subjects to principal in consultation with the School Council shall consider appropriate. And so some of the things that we include in our School Improvement Plan are the school demographics, facilities information, budget, any budget that they may have, and the appendix, which also, and, you know, is, in particular, over the course of the last few years, you know, we have encouraged them to include anything that they feel like they want you to see and is, you know, relevant to their school culture and climate. Every school's different, and we want to make sure that they feel that they can highlight that, especially in the time that they have to present to you and to their school communities. So just to talk about the most recent format, so last year, we did add some things, and Mr. Marani will go into that in a little bit more detail, but has been here for a while. They, the principals typically do a message at the beginning and a reflection. Some principals do three different sections, some principals do it all in one section. We have really steered away from, you know, micromanaging what that looks like, and so it's up to them how they want to present that information to you. What we do ask them to do is make sure that they have a reflection on their data, that they have a reflection on their goals, and that they have a reflection on the vocal survey. How they incorporate that into their message is their call. So the School Improvement Plan, we all, again, we've really tried to push them to develop individual goal statements that are reflective of their school and their school needs. So they work with their staff on that. I think they really, you know, did a nice job of that last year. It was hard for them to separate from the template that we had, you know, traditionally provided them, but they did it. And we actually had a really nice meeting today with the middle school principals to review the data. We reviewed district data, and we reviewed their data in preparation for our presentation to the community on data, and then also their presentations and the development of the School Improvement Plans. And we spent a long time talking about goals and action steps and, you know, what those could look like. And so I, I think that they enjoyed it, and we enjoyed it as well, just having that time today. They also include their, as I mentioned, a professional development plan. They do have a section on extended-day offerings and family engagement and communication. And then, as I just talked about, the school demographics, the facilities, and the budget. And then before I turn it over to Mr. Marani, just to remind you what's in the appendix, so we have, they include, we have all of the reports, the Spring 2024 MCAS data will be included in there. Sometimes principals want to include their own charts that they've done with their staff, and that's fine as well. We do include the charts on, their information on the MAP RIT scores from last year from twenty-three, twenty-four. I do want to just mention, since it is in this appendix, that one of the things that we are considering that you should be aware of, and we can discuss further at a later meeting, eighth grade, I think it came up last year, has an excessive amount of testing. They have, you know, science, they have social studies, they have math, they have ELA, and they also have the, the MAP at the end of the school year. We do not administer the MAP in ninth grade. So it is something that we are recommending that we could consider the spring assessment only, potentially not assessing the eighth graders in the spring. So we wanted to put that out, out to you all, it's something that we're considering because it's not, it's used for the. The MAP, yeah, the MAP. So we're, we're considering because we're going to have a full social studies assessment as well, and it is a lot of testing for those eighth graders. It pretty much will mean the entire spring they're going to be testing. And so we are strongly recommending that we administer the MAP in, to the eighth grade in the, in the fall and in the winter, and that we let go of the eighth-grade spring MAP, because that's three, that's three assessments. They do reading, math, and science in eighth grade. It's a lot. So it's something that we could give on, you know, because we can't give on the MCAS. So, and if you participate, and if the kids have to take access, you're talking even more. So, so anyway, so we just wanted to, where we had this in the appendix tonight, we can talk more about it when we do our district data presentation, but it's something for you to consider and think about, and certainly, you know, you can share your opinions with us.
Did you discuss this with the principals too when you met with the principals?
Yep, they, they agree. I can tell you they one hundred percent agree.
I'm sure they agree.
Yeah, yep. So, and so they also, we also include the 2024 accountability information, we include the 2024 vocal data. We added this last year, I think this was a suggestion from the committee to add a completed section of action steps, so that will also be in the appendix. We have the staffing, I think adding the support services, you know, staffing around support services and numbers was another request from the committee. And then we have the school council members, which, you know, we will have signed, and you know, I think that that was something that the committee felt really strongly about. And then also, the other thing that we do, we did last year, and we will do it again this year, is that we ask the principals to please present to their school communities prior to their presentation to you, and to make sure that they're collecting and adding any, any relevant feedback to the School Improvement Plans based on that feedback. So they do it with their school council, but last year, we asked them to get to their, you know, basically their PTOs or their school communities somehow, some way, and do it for them prior to them bringing it to you. So that that, any feedback that they collect from that should already be incorporated into the School Improvement Plan. So we will do that again this year. I think that came from you all, and so we will do that again. And I think it was really successful, and it worked out well, so we'll, we will make sure that we do that for this year as well. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Marani.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Good evening, everybody. So after going over the format that we used last year, I wanted to go through just a couple of the changes we made last year as a result of your feedback. And so it is our intention to move forward with these changes once again. So when I say changes, they're changes that we implemented last year, and we would like to continue with those changes this year, but, you know, pending your feedback after this presentation. So one of the, the key notable changes there was just the overall process in which principals work with their teams to develop their school-based SMART goals. And so we really wanted to emphasize and empower principals to feel comfortable being individualized in the goals that they develop at their school based on their school's unique needs. So the ways we did that were focusing three-part, one on assessments, so opening up the typical assessments from MCAS and MAP, but also incorporating, for principals that felt appropriate, access M-Class and DIBELS, along with vocal survey data. It's certainly not limited to this list, but these are just, you know, assessments that we use across the district that we say, you know, feel free, if this makes sense for you, certainly feel free and comfortable to incorporate it into your SMART goal. Additionally, just the metrics, so, you know, in past practice, a lot of times you'd seen the same set of metrics across every school, and so we just wanted principals and their teams to feel comfortable picking their metrics based on the needs of their students. And then, of course, making sure that it can be as targeted as they need it to be. And so the target aspect is not just grade levels and subgroups, but it's also within domains and standards. So it might be different domains across different grade levels, it might be different subgroups across the same set of standards, and that could vary school to school. I do have some examples throughout this presentation of just kind of showing you some highlights of what we saw last year to show you the difference in the goals. So with those images there, you'll see on the left, that's actually one, one goal, so that's an ELA goal, looks a little bit different than what we're typically used to, that's because it's a multi-part goal. So if you look, this is an ELA goal that first emphasizes grades three through five, they're focusing in on SA, the SA domain, and they're focusing from a metric standpoint on the average percent correct. So they're looking to, I believe, they were looking, this school was looking for a two percent point increase across those numbers that you see there within those SA categories across grades three through five. And then they went into MAP, which again, that's a pretty traditional test that we've used many times in the past, but what's interesting about this sample is you see the metric has shifted. So rather than just focusing exclusively on the RIT change year to year, they actually focus on the percentage of students that met their projected target. So each student in our MAP database gets assigned a projected target based on how they perform in previous tests. So what this school is looking at is, okay, how many of these students are hitting those projected targets, and what can we do to increase that number? So again, just similar test or similar assessment, just looking at it a little bit differently to advocate for their students and their needs. Again, so if you look top right, another ELA goal, but I just want to emphasize the fact that now you incorporate the DIBELS or the M-Class assessment in there, and it's across K-5. So that's another benefit of opening up the possible assessments they could look at, is we're not just stuck within two through five, which is traditionally what we can look at when we're looking at MAP, obviously three through five, and for middle school beyond five when looking at MCAS. So by bringing DIBELS, really M-Class, it's DIBELS kind of as a former name, but M-Class, by bringing that into that, that opens up the school to be able to establish a metric for students down to kindergarten. So it's a good opportunity. And again, just another highlight there, and these are all separate schools, you'll see a three-part goal there across K-5. So a lot of unique goals across the board. Another notable change was the format in which action steps were recorded. So it may seem basic at first glance, so on the far right, we just simply added a column where principals could add in whether or not that action step is revised from last year, continued on from last year, or new, so a new action step. So that obviously helps from a communication standpoint as we read it, it allows us to see, you know, what has changed, what hasn't. But I also want to point out, it also prompts reflection in the action step development. So it does help, you know, teams of teachers, let's say if you have a, you know, social, or, that's not a great example because we're talking MCAS, but let's say you're talking a science team of teachers, a vertical team, and they're looking at their action steps, it's going to prompt them to say, what have we been doing? What else should we be trying? And just by putting that column in there, it does just kind of prompt that thought process and hopefully create some good conversation in that action step development among the teams at each school. So again, that's another notable change, just adding that status column there. And then the third notable change that's worth mentioning, as Dr. Perkins mentioned, in the appendix, we added a completed action steps component to the appendix. So this was nice because in addition to being able to see what's revised, what's new, what's continued, it also allows us to see, well, what has been removed? What has been taken out from last year, from the previous year? One thing I want to emphasize, though, is just because it's removed, doesn't mean it's not happening in the school. And that was one thing that principals were, you know, questioning, right? And, and so we landed on kind of delineating it in two ways. So if it's completed, that either means it's discontinued. So an example of that, if you look in the, the right picture, the grade K-4, work with literacy consultants, we no longer work with those consultants, so we wouldn't include that. That's a discontinued action step, it's just not the focus for that particular year. And then also, you might see action steps where they're so regular, they're embedded in the day-to-day, and they're no longer a part of, they're, they're not a new action step, they've been repeated year after year, and they're just embedded in the typical daily operations of that school. And so that's where discretion comes into play on the part of the principal and the team members coming up with the action steps. And so it just allows those teams to say, okay, these are still embedded in the day-to-day, but they're kind of automatic at this point, now what are the action steps that we Now what are the action steps that we really have to go out of our way to make sure we make happen by the end of the year to support students? And then lastly, just to give a quick overview of kind of how it all played out last year as far as the presentation piece, they started in early December, so December 4th, 6th, and 11th. We had six schools each, so we started with North Quincy and then the remaining middle schools on the 4th. On the 6th, we had Quincy High School along with five other elementary schools and the remaining elementary schools on the 11th. These occurred during all the teaching and learning subcommittee meetings, or they occurred during each a teaching and learning subcommittee meeting. Each presentation was an average of 17 to 18 minutes, including Q and A, so just again for planning purposes. And just as we look ahead, we just have to consider that now that RDLC is up and running, they're going to have to be a part of this process too. So with that, this is the direction we're looking to go with our school improvement plans. I know the principals are anxious to get started, but we just wanted to give you all the opportunity to offer any feedback on the changes that we made last year and what we plan to do moving forward. Thank you.
So first off, this is great. We really want to see the individuality, needs, and strengths. That's like, I know from talking to my colleagues, that's like something that's very important to us. So this is great. So in saying that, under number seven, the extracurricular activities, I say something I've pointed out several times, is that the principals really need to show us the full year. I've heard so many times that they didn't put stuff in because, well, we didn't have a date, or we didn't know it was going to happen. But it's something that you do every year, and it's something that's really positive in your school community, so let's put it in there. We want to see that, even though it's something that's going to be at the end of the year and you're not really, it's something you do every year, and the school community, they love it, so put it in there. We want to see that, because that shows your individuality of your school. That's something that's really great about your school, so put it in there.
Yeah.
Also, under the removed action steps, if you were saying that the principals were kind of concerned about that, just a suggestion, maybe, I don't know, something you thought of before, just maybe putting like an asterisk down the bottom and letting them write the reason why. Maybe then that would make them feel a little bit more comfortable about having it be a removed action step, just a suggestion in there.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
That's all I have. But this is great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is great. I think it's going to be great. I agree. I love the individualized plan, and I think they did a great job with that last year, though they were worried. I'm wondering if, are we looking at the same timeline? It seemed like it was very late that we got these last year.
I think the data came out a little bit later last year. We do have the data now, and it was made official yesterday. So I'm not sure what the dates are yet for the teaching and learning, but their school improvement, their A-days are coming up. So we met with the middle school today because their A-day is the 9th, I think, and the elementary, it might be October 23rd, I think. So we're meeting with the elementary school next week.
So somebody might be ready earlier than December.
Yeah.
And the time was perfect, really. The presentations were great, and we had all read everything before we got here, and the questions were great. So I think that time is perfect, and we can get that many in a meeting, which is great. I have one question, the new accountability system.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to have to get some information on that sometime.
Yeah, we're going to present on, I think, October 23rd to you all. So we have all the data. We've been poring over it, Mike and Bridgette and Kim and Chris, which is why we met with the principals, and we're meeting with them in separate kind of groups. So we have the elementary coming together next week. We did the middle school today, and we'll be doing the high school principals after that to do just that. So we have been poring over it. I mean, I think, I'm sure you saw the news, across the state, MCAS scores are not great. I think we reflect the state. But we'll be presenting you with an in-depth presentation.
What the new accountability is going to look like.
Yep, on the 23rd.
I'm very confused, not concerned, but confused about what that's going to.
Yeah, so we will present all of that to you, and maybe we could make that the only presentation that night, since it will be pretty substantial.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought, I was not here on the committee during the school improvement plans last year, but I did see them, and I saw that the format seemed a lot looser, which I think allowed for the schools to kind of be a little more personal and unique, and that's what we want to see. It doesn't need to be a cookie cutter from one school to the next. It's just, tell us about your school. Gush about your school. We want to know about it. We want to know what's great, what's working really well, and what you need help with. So I think that the looser, I want to, looser might not be the right word, but format, a little more flexible, might be better, and I'm excited that they'll be a little more comfortable with it this year and even go a little further with that. So definitely, just seeing what's unique about the schools and knowing that the goals don't have to be, you know, all RIT scores need to go up like that. Mr. Marani, like you were mentioning, the ways you can take a goal and expand that. I think that's fantastic, trying to meet the projected, how many students met their projected MAP score or RIT score. I think that's fantastic. So I'm excited to see what those goals will look like, given that flexibility. I'd love to see a real emphasis on facility needs and really just put it in there. Don't feel bad about, if there's a need in your building, put it in there, and it will get to Paul Hines, and we'll get it on the list. But it can't get on a list if they don't tell us. Put everything in there, and not just facility needs, but school needs. If you need books for your library, or you need whatever you need, things in your building, I would love to see that in there too. So facility needs and school needs, if that's something, just a suggestion to add. Technology needs, that type of stuff. That would be great to see in there. And then, thank you for saying about bringing to PTOs first. And I agree with Mrs. Lebo, it felt a little late last year, but also I want to allow that time for the PTOs to be able to give feedback, because oftentimes, PTOs already have their schedules made for their meeting dates, and it's hard if it's done. You want to get it to the PTO and get that feedback, because otherwise, we're looking at a plan that the community might not be on board with. I'm sure they would be, but in theory. So we want to see it after the PTOs have kind of, the parents have gotten to see it and comment on it as well. And the last thing I want to say is, yes, get rid of spring eighth grade MAP tests. Absolutely. I mean, MAP tests really are to help the educator, from what I understand, to help the educator know what to work on next with those students. And we're really at the end of the year there. And like you say, they're not really using that. It doesn't really carry over to ninth grade. So if we can get rid of one, oh my God, it was a constant, having an eighth grader last year and having an eighth grader this year, it's constant testing. And it's just, my kids don't get bothered by the stress of it, but they don't do anything else in the school other than just testing, 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 and it's just too much. So anything we can get rid of, thank you for being creative and trying to figure out something we could maybe get rid of, and I would be fully in support of that one. So, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Were you going to do that?
Yeah.
No, I thought I had two things. I have three things.
Okay.
And two more comments. So this presentation was exactly what I was hoping for last year. This presentation was exactly what I was hoping for. So not only did you educate us and everybody watching at home and everything about all of the DESI requirements that have to go in the school improvement plan, but the discretion that the principals have, and the changes that we made based on the conversation that we had last year. I love the blueprint. I'm looking now at SIPs through a different lens, understanding things a little bit better. So I think there's value to a similar presentation at the beginning of the school year before we get the SIPs going forward, but exactly what I hoped for. So, good stuff. So one specific required component that we've talked about, I think, in different subcommittees was the school safety and discipline. And that's one of those things, and you can figure it out. I still think there would be value to us looking at what the categories of discipline are.
Sure.
And knowing what the numbers are by each school. And I'm not saying that we necessarily have that. If you say for XYZ reasons that we have to do that in executive session, then I'm open to either way, but I just think that we need to see it on a school-by-school basis and understand what the categories are so that we can ask you what those are. So I don't think we ever got that information last school year, so it would be useful to have that. And I'm not saying as part of the SIP presentation, but it would be useful to subsequently have that so that we had it as a discussion before this body.
Sure.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
And then the last thing that I want to say, since we did the SIPs last time, we had Mass Association of School Committees come in and tell us that we can no longer necessarily, when you have a subcommittee, it's the subcommittee members are there unless we post it as a meeting of the whole. And so I'm somebody that enjoys sitting in on the SIPs, and I don't know if we have to have a discussion that, do we do it as a committee of the whole, or is it posted as teaching and learning, but a committee of the whole as well? Because I wouldn't want to be sitting out in the audience if I'm not a member of that committee and hearing those presentations. I would welcome the opportunity. And I don't want to be the first to make an exception of the rule that we just passed.
I'm second.
They say we still have subcommittees, but this is one of those compelling things that I think has value across the system to all of the members of the school committee that we might want to voice. So I'm just weighing, that's more for this group.
Well, I think the chair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent.
I just want to say thank you for taking into consideration all the things that we had recommended last year, and I appreciate adding in the specialists and their caseloads for each school, because that gives us an indication if there's a need for more or if they're doing okay the way they are. And yeah, so thank you for that. And the thing about the embedded, when a goal has been embedded, and I think Mrs. Hubley mentioned this, but you maybe can put that in there, like on the side, that it's been embedded into the curriculum or into those, and that's why it's been done.
Yeah, it's easy.
So that's an easy, you know? Yeah. Okay. So thank you for me, all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next, we are on the Emilio de la Quiza ECC Building referral to facilities. Yep, okay. So moved by Mrs. Hubley, and we're all set there?
I have a motion.
Yep, yep.
Let this be a motion. It's just moved. We don't have a motion.
Well, I just wanted to be able to just give a little reason why I was asking for it to go in there, just since that building's now empty, since we brought all those kiddos over to the RDLC. I think just having a quick conversation about what the future of that building is, and if we had any updates from either the superintendent or the mayor about that, if we could just maybe put that on an upcoming facilities subcommittee meeting, I would appreciate that, Mrs. Hubley.
You're all set?
Thanks.
Thank you. The consent agenda, can we have a motion to approve a second?
Second.
Any conversation on the consent agenda?
Nope.
No, roll call vote?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gaitro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrios?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is no additional business. Communications, we have upcoming school committee meetings, regular meetings on October 9th and the 23rd, November 13th at 6:30 PM at Cottington Building. Workshop meeting is to be scheduled to review the school committee goals document, reports of subcommittees, there are none, executive session, there is none, and so we call the meeting to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Begoli. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.